Good evening, I'd like to call the March 13th Board Meeting of the Johnson County Community College Trustees to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to roll call, I would like to introduce Dr. Larson. Welcome. I believe this is your first meeting at the table. We're pleased that you are still with us.
Thank you, Dr. Larson.
Hope you have a long run. Thanks for being here. Roll call and recognition of visitors.
Our visitors are Dick Carter and David Flora.
Thank you. This is the opportunity for our open forum. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. There are no registered speakers for tonight's meeting. The open forum is now closed. I would like to just interject in the agenda before we get to awards and recognitions. The college celebrated the life of Virginia Krebs Saturday past, and trustee Lindstrom has a comment to make.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. It was my honor to attend the memorial service for Virginia Krebs. As you know, she passed away just a short time ago, and I just wanted to comment. I articulated to Dr. Cook that I was there, and I was not only pleased with what the college had done, but I was very proud of our own trustee Sharp, who was one of the keynote speakers at that event and did a masterful job in representing the college and the trustees, and for that I want to thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Appreciate it very much. Awards and recognitions.
Tonight, we have no awards or recognitions.
Okay. Student Senate report, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. During the last three meetings of the student senate, we had two guest presentations and a listening session from the Strategic Planning Task Force. On February 24th, Kate Allen joined us to discuss the foundation and answer the students' questions. I've been having a lot more interest from the student senate in the foundation and how they operate, so I was very thankful that Kate offered to come in and discuss that with us. The week after, Sherri Barrett and Alicia Bradyhoff presented the latest drafts of the mission, vision, and values developed by the Strategic Planning Task Force and asked for student feedback. I'm sure many of you participated in their dococracy play with the values and the boards with the mission statement and values on them, so that was a really great thing for the students to be part of. Last Monday, we were visited by Shannon Ford, who shared with us the possible implementation of Office 365 software to the college electronic resources. Mr. Ford explained that they were hoping to give student senate a chance to be part of a beta testing program of Office 360 on the campus. Also on the 10th, our Rules and Conduct Committee presented the first set of committee-defining bylaws for the General Assembly's vote. These bylaws set guidelines for the Rules and Conduct Committee, the Brainstorming Committee, and the Mentoring Program Committee. Within the next few weeks, we are hoping to have bylaws approved for each of the standing committees. On the 24th of this month, election packets will be due for the fall elections to fill our five executive board positions. Voting will be on April 8th, 9th, and 10th, which means in my next report, I'll be reading you a list of next year's student senate leaders. Thank you all. We appreciate the time you invest in our student organizations and the students themselves.
Thank you for your leadership in what the students are doing. We know it takes a considerable amount of time to do all those other things, but they're very important, and we appreciate that. Any questions, Mr. Rogers? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
College lobbyist report, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I almost didn't make it this evening. In fact, I was on my way up the sidewalk when a student met me and told me that I was going the wrong way due to the nice weather outside, and I agreed with her and started to turn around, and then it dawned on me that I didn't want to be a disappointment to trustee Musel, because I think he's had enough disappointment today, and so I thought maybe I would offer a few comments that might cheer you up. Turnaround came and went for the legislature. In fact, the legislature finished a little bit early and had a five-day weekend to celebrate all of the work that they accomplished. Lots of bill blessings occurred prior to turnaround. Very little legislation did actually make it past the turnaround time, but we're still talking about a lot of that legislation right now and dealing with bills that went through the process that keeps them alive. During that break, there were about six different editorials from newspapers across the state, none of which were complimentary to the legislative process that is occurring this year, and in many ways, Kansas. We gained some national recognition over the break, and not necessarily in a positive way, just due to some of the special interests and some of the bills that have made their way through the process. But just within the past week or so, the Supreme Court handed down its decision on Gannon, and I will not go into detail about that. I think that there are some potential impacts for Johnson County schools, specifically as it relates to the equality piece that the court pointed out in their decision. They did remand a portion of the decision to a three-judge panel to come back with some additional decisions, as well as some decisions related to potential funding. They gave the court until July 1, 2014, which signals the beginning of the fiscal year for the state of Kansas, and so I think one of the things that we may be seeing as a result of that potentially is a special session. There are some numbers floating around out there. Department of Education has basically settled on around $129 million, $130 million is what they believe the difference would be to be funding education at the adequate and equal level. So we'll see how that plays out through the rest of the legislative session, and of course, we're waiting on part two now of the lower court's decision to come back as a result of the upper body's decision to them and directions to them. With regard to budget matters, again, you would think it would be fairly easy, since we passed a two-year budget last year, to sort of just move through that process and sort of clean up any errors or any pieces that needed to be fixed, and essentially that could be the case. The legislative committees have pretty much taken care of a big whole, a big problem that was related to the Department of Corrections. There are some higher education and K-12 budget issues that are floating around out there, and actually, until this morning, we were pretty close in both the House and the Senate to the governor's budget recommendations. The House this morning did do some slash-and-burn action on the budget specifically as it relates to higher education. There were some across-the-board cuts for the Regents Institute, the Regents Universities, as well as removal of the new money for career in tech ed for 2015, fiscal year 2015, that is. There were some putbacks for GED students that are also enrolled in technical education programs, so we'll see how that plays out. We, of course, are always set up for the conference committee process when it relates to the budget, and that's one of the things that the House is now a little bit different than the Senate. There's some other differences, too, that I'll talk about a little bit later. I'm not going to go through each and every one of the items that I've listed in the report. I will say that the elections committees are still working election bills. I think that where things will ultimately end up is probably local elections in the fall of odd-numbered years in a nonpartisan nature. The action that came out of the Senate Elections Committee this morning was interesting. The bill has been amended to where it exempts county government, water districts, and community colleges. That would be nice. There are some other elements in that bill that maybe aren't so nice. It would have vacancies, and we've had those before, filled by a dual precinct committee process, and as a nonpartisan governing board, that could be very interesting if we have folks who are elected that either are undeclared, or independent, or perhaps libertarian. The process does not allow for a group of peers then, in that scenario, to replace the vacancy.
So what does a dual committee, what does that mean?
It would mean that the precinct committee members and the Republican precinct committee members come together through that central committee process to elect a replacement. As it is now, in most local governing body situations, there is an application period and an interview period, and then the governing body selects the replacement, as you're firmly aware. Let's see here.
I have a quick question.
Trustee Sharp.
A question on that bill. Has there been any talk from the counties, the county election commissioners, or the Kansas Secretary of State's office about the extra cost? Because once you, if you keep water boards, county offices, and community colleges in the spring, you send everyone else to the fall, you're adding a whole other series of elections and expenses and workload. Has there been any concern exhibited on that?
Well, let me answer that by saying this. The components of the bill that was passed out of the Senate Committee today were carryovers from Senate Bill 211, which had hearings last legislative session. There have been no hearings on the bill that came out today. It essentially was a bill that was created or crafted conceptually by a number of amendments. The committee then took those amendments and looked at them in that bill draft format and then came back together with additional amendments, and that's how we got to where we are today. So I would say it would be very difficult to have had a voice, or there was no opportunity for that particular input on that process.
Well, with the original bill, I wouldn't think they would have concerns, because it's the same number of elections, regardless of when you have them, you're still having an election in an even year and an election in an odd year. But once you break it out and add a third cycle of elections, excuse me, it costs them just as much, whether there's five people on the ballot or 10 people on the ballot.
There are no demonstrated cost savings by moving the elections to the fall. You're correct, and there could be, it's difficult to say if there's additional. It certainly is something that the election commissioners will probably have an opinion about, and my guess is by the time the conference committee process rolls around and we're looking at the two versions of the bills, that one that will come out of the House that is still in committee but probably will be acted on next Monday, and the one that came out of the Senate Committee today, once they get paired up, I'm sure that we'll be discussing those exact questions that you just raised.
And while we're still on that bill, trustee Musel.
Yes, sir.
Well, I like trustee Sharp's note that we are simply adding another election, which means it has to cost more to man the polls, woman the polls, in the fall of odd-numbered years, and continue to man them, woman them, in the spring of odd or even-numbered years. The goal, I think, that I've always understood, and I think you told us last time, at least the articulated goal by the proponents of moving them, was we would have more turnout if we moved to the fall, when people are used to having elections. We now would have about one-third as many people on a county-wide ballot, because you'd limit it to county elections, or water districts, or community colleges, which have the lowest, probably, profile of those races anyway. Did anybody voice any concern that it might not actually increase voter turnout? Was that thought given by anybody?
It's fair to say that there was committee discussion, and whether those specific comments were made, I think that there were conversations held. In fact, there were further attempts to also pull out municipalities and school districts. Essentially, then, you're back to spring elections. And so, in its wisdom, and those that have served in that body on either the Senate or House side that sit around this table probably recall that decisions are arrived at sometimes in a very odd manner.
Trustee Sharp.
I wasn't done.
You'll follow?
I would agree with that assessment.
Trustee Musel.
Well, I just, on the replacement, it would be a joint meeting of the recognized political parties' central committees, precinct committee men and women.
Just for that.
For that district. But if it's a community college position, it would be the entire county. And as a former chairman of the Republican Party in Johnson County, I think we have 650 precinct committee men and women, and the Democratic Party has about 40.
30.
I mean, seriously. So although they would keep the partisan notion, it seems clear to, for the election itself, it seems clear to me, the legislature, the supporters of that amendment want any replacement to be on a partisan basis.
You're painting a picture of concern that has been expressed by many, not necessarily behind the podium testifying, but the conversations do occur in Topeka along those lines.
And I would just point out to the people watching that there are, I don't know how many vacancies there are on cities, counties, school boards, water district boards in a year, in a county with 600,000 people like Johnson County, and the legislature doesn't like the board itself, you know, finding the replacement for that. It will be turned over to two partisan political bodies, one of which is extremely dominant in this county. I happen to be a member of that body, but as I think I said last month, the voters in Overland Park and the voters in Johnson County, the last two times it was a referendum, voted to go nonpartisan. So if we have any input into that, I think it makes much more sense from a public policy standpoint for this board and any other board to select its own replacement, and then we stand for the voters the next time we're elected, and they tell us that Lindstrom and Drummond should not have been selected.
Trustee Cross. I'm anticipating the question you may have.
I'm going to defer comment at this time.
Any other comments on this bill? Proceed.
My only final thought or comment about that is we're a long way from the finishing point, and a lot can happen before that bill is finalized. There are several tax bills out there. Again, I'm not going to go through each individual bill. Many of them are moving. They relate to commercial and industrial machinery and equipment. There are a couple of those moving through the process. We still have decisions out there floating around on the switch from the Court of Tax Appeals back to a Board of Tax Appeals, and then we also have a bill out there floating around that deals with mortgage registration fees. Again, all of those bills are different in their nature and in their ultimate impact on whichever group they're serving. However, they all potentially impact the county budget in some way, shape, or form, which again, then potentially impacts your decisions that you're making about local mill levies and what might need to be done in the event that all of the dollars that the county has been experiencing in revenue that comes to their budget that might go away. So there is a lot of still open decisions. That's not the right way to say it, but there is a lot of decisions still to be made on issues related to taxation at the county level.
Trustee Musel and trustee Sharp.
I'm sorry, I seem to dominate these. This is really the only time we get to talk policy, because most of the time, we're actually doing the plumbing that runs a college. But on the tax bill, would you please tell the Johnson County citizens, if the legislature in its wisdom eliminates the mortgage registration tax, how much does that take out of the county budget? And if I think we're at one mill generates about $7 million, how many mills of property tax would be increased in Johnson County to make that up?
Yeah, it'd be a little bit more than two mills.
So it's more than, about $16 million?
That's about the right number.
Would be taken away from the current tax base and have to be made up in some fashion?
In some fashion.
Thank you.
Or cut. Greg, that's another option.
Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm having a hard time understanding the change from, it's called Coda to Boda, the Court of Tax Appeals to the Board of Tax Appeals, and its trickle-down impact on counties and how that changes what we receive in assessed valuation.
Sure. Well, there's different versions of bills out there, and the reality is, there are some who are not pleased with the way the Court of Tax Appeals operates, and in the time that it takes to render or receive a decision, and some of the proposals that have been put out there would put in place a policy that could reduce the amount that is levied based on the participants in a tax decision in that process. So we don't know what that number looks like today. There have been some other proposals that haven't made it this far, that are very serious in nature as far as the impact that it could create, and the result of some of those proposals early on would be that you could suggest a number that you believe, if you're appealing, you could suggest a number that you believe your property is actually worth, and if a decision is not rendered by a time certain, that the decision automatically defers to whatever number you're suggesting. If you were to see something like that put in place, you would see a mad rush by many property owners to that body to appeal or petition, which then could further exacerbate the issue as it relates to taxation to the county.
Trustee Cross and trustee Musel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions for Mr. Carter. Why did we switch from a tax board to a tax court?
I'm not sure I can answer that. I think that occurred in 2006, and I'm not sure that I have the specific memory or recollection as to why that changed.
Well, thank you. I can Google that now. Appreciate it. And then, on machinery and equipment, maybe I just haven't caught it in following the legislature, do they want to undo, what is the issue with respect to several bills regarding machinery and equipment?
Sure. Around that same time, 2006, 2008, there was a law passed that eliminated machinery and equipment taxation on new purchases, and there was a stair-step process for helping counties to ease into that transition. I think only the first year of that stair-step process was actually funded, and so there's been an additional realized loss of revenue because the makeup from the state wasn't there that was promised. Over the past several years, there have been a couple of significant cases as a result of audits in two particular areas of the state, where some large, complex, industrial corporations received a significant assessment, and when I say significant, we're talking extra commas and extra digits, going from $2 million to $11 million to $13 million. Those triggered a series of bills in the legislature. One particular bill has made its way almost through the entire process this year, and this is the third or fourth year that that entity has attempted to do it. It affects only one corporation that operates in one county in this state, and that bill is probably going to be passed and be sent on to the governor. There's another bill out there that potentially has some adverse impacts on the way complex properties are assessed and the way the appeals can be worked, and so, again, it impacts the amount of money that potentially goes to a county treasury. The, well, I would just stop there. That's kind of where we're at. There's a whole host of proposals out there. Right now, there's about two that are still moving.
Trustee Musel.
Well, I've been involved in property tax appeals since 1987. I think the reason it was changed from a board to a court was so we could eliminate, we could go from five people to two people and save two salaries and benefits. That's the best justification I can ever remember for 2006 when it happened. The reform effort now is because of some actions of the current court, the three-judge court, that have been not well-received by taxpayers or the business community or the Kansas Chamber, and although I agree that the court needs some reforms, when you get it in the legislature, it opens up a lot of things. I know that one of the things the counties worried about was this process, that if you don't issue a decision within 90 days, the taxpayer's number is automatically accepted. That leads to different motivations as to what your number might be, particularly when this Court of Tax Appeals has less staff than it did last year and the year before and the year before. Another proposal was to require the county, when you get to the Court of Tax Appeals, to have a separate fee appraisal done, just like the taxpayer often does, as opposed to relying on the county's mass appraisal data. That would be a huge expense and staffing problem for the county and probably would result in the county not doing that, and reductions in appraised values being one in favor of the taxpayer. I represent the taxpayer. I'm going up there tomorrow on a trial, so I take tax base from this board if I can on cases I think have merit. That would dramatic, could dramatically change the tax base for any local government.
Let's have Mr. Carter finish his report, and then we'll come back to trust, unless you have something.
Just a quick thank you for indulging me. I'm realizing how critical this is, so I appreciate it, trustee Musel.
And on the machinery and equipment, I think it's important for everybody to understand, it's a definition of whether a particular conveyor belt that you bolt to your floor is machinery and equipment, which is tax-exempt, or is real property, which is valued at its full fair market value. And that's why a concrete plant can see its tax bill go from $3 million to $13 million in one year.
Right.
Mr. Carter.
Thank you, and I'm sorry to extend the conversation a little bit longer, because I think there'll be some additional conversation regarding this matter, too. There are three higher education pilots that are being proposed on the Senate side of the body, and we're impacted in nearly all three of them. The first one is one that directly speaks to Johnson County Community College, and it would be the GoPro program, which would establish partnerships with public-private partnerships and would allow for some additional targeted career in tech ed-type training. It would be a pilot project that would have funding in the current year of about $500,000, and then would have a fiscal year 15 appropriation of about $1.5 million. So overall, for the program, for the pilot program, would be about $2 million. That bill had a hearing last week, earlier this week? Last week?
It was this week.
It was this week, Monday. Then, two bills that had hearings today, again, along the same lines of career in tech ed and higher education. The first was a post-secondary career in tech ed performance-based funding model, and that has mainly to do with programs that would enroll a student in a career in tech ed program while they are also seeking to complete their GED. The interesting thing about that particular bill is we are specifically carved out in the legislation and mentioned in the bill. I can't explain why. I don't know what the specific reason is, but that is the case for Senate Bill 429. The third item then would be another pilot program that would encourage community colleges or technical colleges to partner with a four-year institution, and then there would be a component, it would be grant-based, it would be competitive, and you would apply, and there would be a review board that would take a look at the programs, make decisions, I suppose, based on the assembly of a proposal, and then there would be money that is associated with that program to buy down mill levy rates ultimately. I think the concern with that bill is now you get into the arena where we might be talking about other things that could be done to mill levies, whether they're statewide or whether they're continued on a per-institution, per-grant basis, the way the program is set up. That's about $5.3 million for, again, 2015. And so, all in all, there's about $11 million to $13 million in new programming that is proposed by several members of the Senate Ways and Means Committee. Those bills do not exist on the House side. This will be a conference committee issue. Again, a long road to hoe to get those programs or to get those bills to their final resting place, if you will, if they're to be successful. I do believe that the goal is to blend or marry those three proposals into one bill, and so there will be lots of discussion as it relates to those three proposals, and I do think that there is a genuine interest in the community college arena from that particular body. I also think that there may be some level of interest in steering away from some of the Regents Universities. So I would just, I would stop there, and I think if, and certainly I would look to Dr. Sofchik to help me answer, or Dr. Spoh.
To say that on the pilot projects, anticipating lots of discussion there, you've got a lot of background information on that. Some of you have been visiting with legislators about that, particularly the GoPro program, as Mr. Carter has indicated. As Mr. Carter has indicated, there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of work to be done. And I suspect that, you know, this is kind of a first for Johnson County in in getting some of the special grant money that that goes to other parts of the state. But as we talked about last month, I believe we need to be very careful about the consequences. We need to have a balanced approach to it. Trustee Cross, I appreciated your comments in terms of concerns. I think they're shared, as you have visited with me individually, all of you, sustainability, what happened in the third year. It's really a when you when you look at the pilot itself, to bring public schools together, and I think Dr. Hinson testified with you, Dr. Sobchak, on Monday in that case, to bring a public school district together with a community college and a four-year school, it's it really has some really powerful things. But at the risk of going on to a lot of discussion tonight, I'd like for us just to study that and to to visit with Dr. Sobchak more about that and visit with your local legislators about that topic. And with that, I'll acknowledge Dr. Sobchak.
Well, thanks, trustee Cook. I believe I testified on Monday, along with Jim Hinson, Superintendent of Shawnee Mission, who's very excited about the prospects of this program. But this is all very futuristic in a way. In other words, the parties all need to come together. They need to sit down and need to hash this out and try to design a program that works. We've mentioned that UCM, University of Central Missouri, has has something comparable. Our challenge is to try to do that better. It's it is very exciting, and it presents a wonderful opportunity for students and families in this community to have their children go to school, go to college, to graduate with a real with a with a great job, making a good salary, and the way it's currently drawn up to do that debt-free. So, that's the vision of the program. Now, whether or not we can get K-12, the community college, the universities, and the business partners all to work together to execute this, that's what remains to be seen. So, it's a very exciting prospect. I will tell you that just the the hearing and the the subsequent newspaper story, I've been getting phone calls from various sources that are very excited about the prospects of working together on a regional basis. And so, this is kind of the the potential for this. The challenge is, of course, legislative process, the fact that this bill has been bundled with several others. As Dick mentioned, it's a long road to go, and we have a lot of things to think about as we move down that path to see where this where we can go with this. And so, that's where it currently stands right now.
Trustee Musil.
Well, I I agree. I think it's an exciting opportunity. I love the collaboration from K-12, community colleges, and our four-year universities, who seem to be in disfavor in Topeka, but who still do a really good job in Kansas. I guess what what I want to my caution is, and it kind of falls on what trustee Cross has, is that if this is tied to a buy-down of local property taxes by the State General Fund, the State General Fund money comes 35% from Johnson County?
Thirty.
Thirty percent income tax and property tax? So, we can we can have a great program, increase the taxes on our our folks, and be constrained in our own mill levy. On the concealed weapons open carry bill, I just want to make it understand that what's on general orders at the House that it could pass at any moment is a bill that would completely eliminate the ability of any local governmental body elected by its citizens to regulate whether an employee could come to work with a concealed carry or an open weapon on their hip.
That's correct. And nothing in in context of what you just mentioned changed when the bill was sent back to committee. They did pull off out a couple of items that I placed in the in the report in bold, just so folks would know what changes were made. But you're you're correct. It would eliminate the the employer's ability to regulate whether or not an employee could carry.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me just unless you have other questions, Mr. Carter. We've been on this for a while, but I think trustee Musil is right on target. Rarely do we take the opportunity, have the opportunity to discuss these policy issues, which are very important. A couple of things. While the financial amount outcome of the Gannon case is going to be significant, I I believe, Mr. Carter, that the the discussion going forward and the decisions on equity and adequacy are are really important as it relates to the future of our public schools in this county, and I believe there's also a potential reference to the college. And then to identify the Rose case in Kentucky as the base adequacy measure, there's seven listed in the in the opinion. I I just am concerned that we're getting momentum that those are the benchmarks that we're going to in Kansas begin to measure adequacy on. So, again, I would encourage you, I I think we received a very we got we received the total 100 and what, 10 pages of the opinion and a nice summary. I would encourage you all to read and reread that. Let's not just get caught up on the potential financial cost, but let's look at some of the implications going into the future on those two issues. And then finally, I would like to thank you, Dick. I know that you're putting in a lot of time with moving parts. And my concern is that items seem to be added within the legislature. Short notice, you've referenced in your minutes that there was a decision made without a hearing. And I I have I have said that I would hope that the legislature would be as transparent as they're expecting organizations to be as as we do our business. And so, with that, Dr. Sobchak, if you have a final comment?
Yes, I would like to commend Mr. Carter. We've worked pretty closely over the past couple of weeks. I I appreciate his he was hoping for a brief report tonight. But the way things are happening up there, they happen so fast, and they come out of they sometimes things come out of nowhere. Just to try to stay up to speed is a real challenge, let alone trying to decipher these bills. And so, Dick has done a great job with that, and it's much appreciated, so thank you.
And I guess finally, I would say that I will call upon trustee Musil and trustee Sharp.
I think it's important, given how fast things change and how no matter what the best intentions are, transparency in the legislature is difficult when you're working with 125 House members and 40 senators and the governor's staff and all the other things. How important it is to have somebody on the ground there every day watching for this college, or watching for the University of Kansas, or watching for the city of Overland Park, and to to be wary of continued efforts to say governmental entities cannot have and cannot use public funds for a lobbyist because somehow that impedes the legislative process. It is so important for us to know what's going on so we can represent our constituents and for us to give feedback to legislators through you, Dick, that everybody ought to be concerned about efforts that say, "You don't get to come talk to me in the legislature. You do not get to come send a representative to me because I have decided I don't want to hear you." And so, I agree. Thank you for your time, and and let's keep an eye on the bigger ball, which is we deserve representation in Topeka, and the taxpayers of Johnson County deserve it, and it's worth every penny that we pay for it.
Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just say to the taxpayers that are watching this and to everyone in this room, the amount of overreach into local governments at every level, the the grasping at local control from the duly-elected local elected officials that each of us vote for in city and water board and community college elections, those responsibilities of those locally-elected officials who represent very specific areas for a very specific reason, those are being taken away. Good example, I have a small business. I don't pay state income taxes on my LLC. But guess what? That makes my income higher, and I have to pay more to Washington. I can tell you, I would rather send my check to Topeka than to Washington. You're going to start seeing that very distinctly at the local level. We already have. We had to increase our mill last year. Eighty-five of the 105 counties in Kansas have increased their property taxes in the last two years. We're going to start seeing that come down to the local level and to local taxpayers where if your road has a pothole that's not getting fixed, if your swimming pool is cutting hours and cutting staff because they don't have the money, it's not them. They're getting funds and power taken from them by Topeka. Pay attention to who your state representative is. Pay attention to who your state senator is. Call somebody who's politically active to ask them. But these things are happening without a lot of trans without any transparency virtually. But it's happening so fast that we're all of us are impacted before we know better. And by the time that we know we find out, it's too late to change it. So, I'm stepping off my seat.
Trustee Cross.
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and thank you to my fellow board members for these excellent comments. Point of order, if I may, did we not allocate part of Mr. Carter's the funding for Mr. Carter is not privately coming from the foundation this year?
That's correct. That's correct.
I just wanted to point that out to the viewers and the folks in the audience that while I certainly agree with trustee Musil that I think we have the right to do that, many of us run our own businesses, and we appreciate having somebody on the ground in Topeka and Washington. I just wanted to point that out.
Trustee Drummond, trustee Lindstrom, do you feel overwhelmed with all of this discussion? Do you guys have any comments? I feel like we're leaving you out of this discussion.
I know how to raise my hand.
Mr. Carter, thank you very much. Appreciate your work. With that, we'll move to committee reports and recommendations, and it appears we have more than one recommendation tonight. Mr. Musil.
You're going to all be sick of me or sicker than you were before. Management committee met on March 5. We had a long agenda that day, and we have quite a few items on the on the agenda today for action. I'm going to roll nine of them into one into one vote in a minute here. But our first recommendation is found on page one of the packet. In our ongoing review of policies, and we thank all the staff that are involved in those, there are revisions to the cost-per-credit-hour policy and the deferred payment plan policy. The revision to the credit-hour policy is the authorization we need to implement the Brown and Gold Club revision to authorize specific fees for those Johnson County residents over 60 who participate in a campus for-credit class, if I'm describing that correctly. And the deferred payment policy is how students are eligible to make installment payments in the same semester that they are enrolled in order to spread out the cost of their tuition. They still, as I questioned at the time, are still required to pay before the end of the semester before they get their grades. So, it's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to provide to approve the proposed amendments to the following policies. One, cost-per-credit-hour policy 212.02, and two, the deferred payment plan policy 212.06, and I would so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Second item for action is a policy amendment to use of technology and communication system policy number 510.00. We reviewed those and the revisions regarding acceptable use of college-provided technology and communication systems. I would summarize it very, very high summary as it's one of your rights and obligations and expectations of privacy when you hook into or use the college information technology system. Denise is shaking her head, kind of yes. So, it's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the revisions to the use of technology and communication systems policy 510.00, and I would so move.
Second.
And I would make if I could add.
We have a motion and a second. Trustee Lindstrom.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. I would add that it also applies to the trustees.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One, no.
The the next recommendation actually includes nine separate recommendations. Last year in 2012, we sent out requests for proposals on a number of routine and ongoing types of activities on campus that need to be done and need to be done on a quick notice. Our smaller to smaller-cost items such as carpentry services or engineering services or electrical repairs. And so, we we approve a specific contractor based on that RFP to be on call for those items. There are nine different items on here, and it is a recommendation of the management committee that all of these be approved. Architectural services with HMN Architects and PGAV Architects at a total annual expenditure not to exceed 175,000. Carpentry labor services with Lidle Construction, Inc., and KES Construction LLC at a total annual expenditure not to exceed 75,000. Civil engineering services with Cal Valley Engineering, Inc., and Payne &amp; Brockway, P.A. at a total amount or annual expenditure not to exceed 50,000. Codes consulting and building inspections with FSC, Inc., and Thacker &amp; Associates, LLC at a total annual expenditure not to exceed 35,000. Electrical repairs and installation services with Heritage Electric, LLC, and Mark One Electric Company, Inc., total annual expenditure not to exceed 125,000. Landscape architecture and design consulting services with Jeffrey L. Bruce &amp; Company and Land Plan Engineering, P.A. at a total annual expenditure not to exceed 35,000. MEP engineering services with the Clark Inerson Partners and Langford &amp; Associates at a total annual expenditure not to exceed 125,000. Structural engineering services with Bob D. Campbell &amp; Company and Walter P. Moore at a total annual expenditure not to exceed 35,000. And finally, masonry inspection and design consulting services at a total annual expenditure not to exceed 75,000. I notice on my list, I don't have the specific entity for that. It is. Let me help you. Where are them? This is the masonry and inspection. Anybody? You have the name of the company?
God, it's.
Campbell.
It's DGM Consultants.
DGM Consultants.
Yeah, sorry.
At a expenditure not to exceed 75,000. And I would move acceptance of all nine of those recommendations.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Or does a trustee want to pull any of those recommendations out individually? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next recommendation is regarding our our classroom space at King's Cove and a renewal of the lease to extend it from March 31, 2014, when it is to terminate under the current lease, to extend that to March to May 31, 2014. All additional terms will remain the same. We'll simply extend it to May 31, 2014, at which time we anticipate giving up that space and utilizing space at Shawnee Mission North High School. So, it's a recommendation that the Board of Trustees accept the administration's recommendation to extend the King's Cove lease agreement on a month-to-month basis for two additional months, terminating on May 31, 2014 at a rate of 13.25 per square foot, based on 9,037 billable square feet for a monthly total of 9,978.35 for the duration of the extended two-month lease, and I would so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Last action item is a memorandum of understanding between Johnson County Community College and the University of Kansas. We have collaborated with with the KU Edwards Campus in a in a great example of sharing in public resources and tax dollars and benefiting our citizens to allow KU to connect to our CANREN, K-A-N capital R-E-N, network. And KU will then agree to exchange monthly payments with us for their share of that cost. It's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the execution of a memorandum of understanding between JCC and the KU Edwards Campus for the college to provide connectivity to KU to the CANREN network in exchange for monthly payments by KU to cover KU's usage of JCC's CANREN connectivity services, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. That was terrific. Mr. taking the great speech class to keep all those straight. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We received a number of reports from staff which are listed in your agenda on page four. I'd be happy to answer any questions about those to the extent I'm able, or staff here will be able to, but otherwise, I'll short-circuit that and and close my report.
Any questions of trustee Musil?
Thank you.
May I?
Yes, trustee Cross.
Did you practice all that?
I I stood in front of a mirror for a couple of hours.
No, seriously, I'm asking.
I have a great staff. Mitch puts together great notes following our committee. So, we have the agenda, we have the committee meeting, and we have notes. So, it becomes easier because of the great work by our talented administration.
Mitch, thank you very much, and to the committee, thank you. That was a a long agenda item with a lot of discussion in committee, I know. Learning quality, trustee Lindstrom.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. The learning quality committee meeting minutes are on pages 25 to 35 in your board packet. As you will note, the meeting was held at 8:00 a.m. on Monday, March 3, 2014. Trustee Cross and I attended. The meeting was directed by Clarissa Craig. There were three presentations, and the learning quality committee will be asking for the Board of Trustees to take action on two recommendations. Emily Berman, general manager for the Performing Arts Center. General Manager of the Performing Arts Center, presented a list of proposed performances for the Carlson Center for the 2014-2015 season, and that recommendation can be found on page twenty-six of the board packet. It is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the performance calendar and, and approve the Administration's recommendation to allow contract negotiations for groups to perform at the Carlson Center during the 2014-15 academic year, as shown in the board packet, and I would so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The second presentation was made by Dennis Day, Vice President of Student Success and Engagement. He reviewed recommendations regarding the amendments which relate to general student matters and the college admission policies. This action is a part of a larger review of all college policies regard, directing, directly affecting students, and is being conducted for the purpose of improving the key performance indicator of student satisfaction. Specifically, the recommendation updates would consolidate and clarify the college's admissions policies into three policies. The first one being credit admission policy 310-01. The second would be continuing education admission policy 310-02, and the third would be international student admission policy 310-03. The remaining policies in section 310 would be deleted. The recommendation would be, it is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation to the College Administration to approve the proposed amendments to the following policies. Credit admission policy, as I mentioned, 310-01. Continuing education admission policy 310-02, and international student admission policy 310.03, and the deletion transfer of the remaining admission policies as shown subsequently in the board packet, and I would so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The third presentation was made by Clarissa Craig, Associate Vice President for Instruction. She presented the new course GIST 250, Introduction to Globalization. This is a three-hour credit course to be articulate, will be an articulated course with the University of Kansas, and will examine economic and political globalization, as well as global security, culture, and environmental issues. Students will be introduced to the variation in global issues that influence national policy and our daily lives. It will be effective in the fall of 2014. Jeanette Jasperson, Coordinator for International Education, also provided some information on the various student opportunities for stu, for study abroad, including the fact that over one hundred Johnson County Community College students traveled abroad last year. Also effective this fall for the 2014 semester, Micro Computer Program, Programmer Analysis Certificate will be re-titled to Computer Information Systems Software Development Certificate. That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman, I would welcome any comments from others who were in attendance, or any questions?
Any questions of Trustee Lindstrom?
Thank you very much. Trustee Musel.
I don't know if it's appropriate now, but since we just talked about the Performing Arts Series for next year, I know that at the Management Committee, Trustee Stewart, passed out flyers for the Cohen Series that he funded in, in the name of Bart Cohen, and Tracy Lawrence, country western singer, will be participating, will be performing on campus on Saturday, May 3rd. The proceeds of all the Cohen Series go to scholarships, so if you at all like Tracy Lawrence, or country music, or country rock, and you want to help students on campus, I'd anticipate that you would be there, and I know Trustee Stewart would say that if you aren't, he will reference one of Tracy Lawrence's songs, which is Find Out Who Your Friends Are, and he will remember you.
Thank you, Trustee Musel. I'm sure we'll all take heed. Human Resources, Dr. Drummond.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. The Human Resource Committee met at eight o'clock on Thursday, March 6th. Myself and Trustee Sharp represented this group, and we had several staff members there, including Dr. Corb and Denise and her fair president over there. He was there as well. We had a long, long agenda. We reviewed benefit recommendations that we've been working on for quite a while. You might recall a special meeting we had to talk about some of those concepts, and we also talked about a policy that was passed by the Management Committee as well. So I have ten recommendations that cover six pages, and it would be my suggestion that we take those as a group, as we did with our management, but I'd be glad to go through them real quickly with you and give you some detail, and then you can decide at that point.
Trustee Drummond, if I might, for the benefit of the audience, there might, might be concern of pooling them. I would say that all of these decisions and recommendations that we're making are a result of a long-time dialogue and, and work with each of those agencies, so I, we're not, we're not just doing this in haste. This is, these, these policy, these premiums and companies and RFPs have taken a lot of time, so if the trustees don't mind in pooling them, proceed.
Good. Thank you very much. We reviewed the dental insurance, the life insurance, short-term disability insurance, the vision insurance, the benefits consulting services, the flexible spending account administration, the employee assistance plan administration, the flex benefit funding, the employer 403B contribution, and the medical insurance. We again had discussion about each one of these, and as Dr. Cook said, we had previous discussion on all, all of these in previous board meetings, special board meetings. I would be happy to go through all these details, of which there are many, a lot of numbers here, a lot of concepts, or we can pool them together and take them as a group, whatever your pleasure is.
Let's, is there any item that a trustee would like to pull for individual action? Proceed, Trustee Drummond.
Thank you very much. It is a recommendation the Human Resources Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the College Administration's recommendation to authorize the President to negotiate contracts subject to review by the College Council for benefit renewals listed on pages thirty-six through forty-two of the board packet. This recommendation includes dental insurance, life insurance, short-term disability insurance, vision insurance, benefits consulting services, flexible spending account administration, employment assistance plan administration, flex benefit funding, employer 403B contribution, and medical insurance. And I would just interject here, not as part of this motion, that there was very comprehensive bidding on each one of these things, and it was very competitive and to our favor in many, many cases. With all that, it is my recommendation, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Trustee Musel.
I just want to note, this is the first time, as I recall it, that we have actually voted on benefit policies that, that reflect our new two-tier employee benefit system, if you will.
Correct.
Which we adopted as a way to make our employee benefit plans more sustainable, and hopefully, hopefully sustainable, certainly more sustainable. But it, this is one policy decision that we discussed at the board in work sessions about how are we going to ensure that our benefit costs are tho, are in line with other colleges, with other public institutions, and with the resources that we have to spend on them. And I'm, I'm not a big fan of two-tiered systems within a single employee body, but I, I did support this, and I agree that in light of all the things we went through, it was a way to do it. But I think it's important, again, for our citizens to know that we have taken what is a pretty major step toward finding a way to keep our benefit costs sustainable, so that we can continue our quality at a cost that's acceptable to the taxpayers.
I would say that, Trustee Sharp, I'm sorry.
I would just, I want to thank Judy and Jerry and the, the benefits team for all their work on this. It takes a lot of work offline, behind the scenes, and a lot of work happens before we even get to committee to work more on it. So they did a really good job at executing all of these RFPs and contracts, and I feel like we have a really good package that will, like, like Trustee Musel said, help us maintain a sustainable benefits program. So I just want to take the opportunity to thank, to thank you and your team for, for awesome work, and thank you, Mr.-
Thank you, Trustee Sharp. I would, I would add that as I look through the detail of each of these, again, we had a zero percent increase in four or five of the items. We had a one percent decrease in one, a sixteen percent decrease in another, and I was very, very interested in the health insurance, that had an increase of four point six to seven point four, I believe it was, depending upon the options. So again, in many cases, for the taxpayers' benefit, a zero percent increase in many of them, a couple of decreases, and a, a, I guess, an acceptable increase in the group health for what we're trying to accomplish. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. The last thing I would like to add to these comments is that the Board has been working on this since 2010, and again, I would echo what Trustee Sharp said. The staff's done an incredible job of going through these numbers, making these changes, coming up with these concepts. The benefit committee that they've had for an extended period of time with the Faculty Association is just a wonderful job they've done, and it has moved, as Trustee Sharp said, a, a big step closer to sustaining the benefits program for our employees well into the future. So I would thank them for that. And that ends my report.
Any other questions of Trustee Drummond? Thank you very much. Next item is collegial steering. Collegial steering did meet on March 4th at four o'clock. We really focused on a couple of items, and what I'm very pleased about is, it seems like we just start and the hour is gone, and, and we, we could use more time. But we, we talked about criteria for student success as we continue to emphasize the key performance indicators, and interestingly, the, the discussion really focuses around those very basic things. Do the students have a clear understanding of what the goals of the class are? Are the, is the syllabus of each class clear and precise? Can we go online as a student and see where we are and what's expected? And any organization that's successful, or any team that's successful, has pretty clear goals and expectations, and we work toward those goals and expectations. So I really appreciated the, the open dialogue. It was kind of like our report tonight with the lobbyists, everybody wanting to, eager to, to give a viewpoint, and it was a very, very healthy discussion. And, and the outcomes of that discussion are to go back and have further discussion within departments and within our organ, within our teaching and learning process to make sure that we do what we say we're going to do to help students be successful. Then we, that kind of segued into our database system, and, and, you know, it's, it's kind of like, I, I, I look at it as, you know, let's, we put too much emphasis on these computers because they're not going to be here next week anyway, so let's just go back to our paper, because they're not going to last. iPads aren't going to last. All this stuff is going to go away. And, and, and at our office, we put in a new database system, and we have people believing that, well, I'm so comfortable with the old one, I think we'll just use that, and, until somebody tells me really that we're pulling the plug on that. And so again, we have a lot of people really committed to doing the best they can with the database we have. It's, I think, as I listen to the dialogue, how can we help reinforce and, and help everybody be successful and more comfortable with the database we're trying to, to implement? We, we will continue that discussion, and we will also discuss adjunct status and full-time faculty, and, and again, additional items that drive key performance indicators of this college. So with that, I, I just am pleased that the faculty have time to come and visit with us, and, and we have a good exchange there. Any questions of collegial steering? President's recommendations for action. First item is Treasurers Report, Trustee Lindstrom.
Treasurers Report? Oh, yes, okay. Thank you. For some reason, I heard something different there. I'm pleased to present the Treasurers' Report for the month ending January 31st, 2014, which can be found on pages forty-four through fifty-five. Briefly, here are a few highlights. On page fifty-four, at the bottom of the page, please note the fund balances, fund cash balances. At January 31st, we had a book balance of one hundred and one point six million, with seventeen point two million in outstanding encumbrances, leaving us with an unencumbered balance of eighty-four point four million dollars. Ad valorem, distributions of forty-one point eight million were received and distributed to the general fund, special assessments fund, and the capital outlay fund. State pay, payments of ten point seven million were received in January, and were, were distributed in the general fund and the post-secondary technical education fund. Expenditures in the primary operating fund are within approved budgetary limits, and it is the recommendation of the college's administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers' Report for the month ending January 31st, 2014, subject to audit, and I would make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other items on the Treasurers' Report? Trustee Lindstrom?
Well, just, just one briefly, and I don't have all my notes here, but the, there was a correction on last month's Treasurers' Report, and I didn't know whether or not we needed to bring that back up to our attention for another formal vote, because there was a, 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 a problem with transferring that to a PDF file, that some of the information wasn't transferred. The, the trustees were provided with the correct information, so I wanted to make sure if it was necessary for us to make a, a motion on that last.
I visited with Don and Dr. Sobchak about that, and again, the numbers weren't changed, but when the transfer went from one file to the other, some of the numbers got transfigured.
Right.
But I'm comfortable that everything-
Okay.
-is, is in order.
Great.
That would all be subject to audit, and so I, I believe it's okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Trustee Cook. There is one clinical affiliate agreement. This is for hospitality management and credit instruction. The agency is Benton House of Lee Summit, Missouri. The clinical experience is dietary manager internship. It is the recommendation of the College Administration that the Board of Trustees authorize the college to enter into an agreement with the above agency for the clinical experiences indicated for the period March 14th, 2014, through June 30th, 2014.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We also have two recommendations pertaining to the calendar. One is a revision to the 2015-16 academic calendar. I'll read the recommendation to you. It is a recommendation of the College Administration and the Faculty Association that the Board of Trustees approve the 2015-16 academic calendar as shown on the following pages. And you can see there, when you go to December, the scheduled final exams for the students were changed from beginning on December 5th to beginning on December 7th, that's a Saturday to Monday, and going through Friday, the 11th, that was changed to Sunday, the 13th. Those are the two changes.
Do we have a motion?
Quick question, if I may.
Do we have a motion?
Seven.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second it. I think I have the same question probably that Mr. Trustee Cross has, but-
Questions, Trustee Cross.
Just curiosity, do we have exams on Saturday and Sunday?
Well, that's why we changed it, and we, and we moved it to Monday, so.
So there are no exams on Sunday?
Actually-
Oh, we do have them.
Yes. It could be.
I'm just curious, I don't have any problem with it, I'm just-
It's okay. So why did, why did we make the change?
It became a trailer instead of a header. What we were missing was some days in the semester for that weekend, so it became a trailer instead of a header for that final week. So it ends the final week as opposed to the start of the final week.
It's scheduling lingo, trailers and headers, yes.
Trustee Musel. I'm just trying to figure out why we can't move it, the start date, one day earlier, so you're not having exams on Sunday. It just, it struck me as odd. I don't know if we've done it before.
You have Sunday classes.
You have Sunday for credit classes, that people, are those the ones that will have exams? So if people have chosen to go to class on Sunday, they can expect their exam to be on Sunday. All right, then I'm fine with that. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other recommendation?
We're gonna vote on that first.
Oh, sorry.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Proceed.
Okay, this one is a recommendation for the 2016-17 academic calendar, replete with headers and trailers. It is the recommendation of the College Administration, the Faculty Association, that the Board of Trustees approve the 2016-17 academic calendar as shown on the following pages.
Do we have a motion?
Seven.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It's time for the President's Report. You have all received the monthly report to the President. You have all received the monthly report to the president. We always like to take it one step further. But before we get started, Trustee Lindstrom, you have a brief report to make?
I do. In January, Trustee Cook requested the formation of a subcommittee on trustee expense reimbursement. As I reported in February, the subcommittee's charge was to review and update the college's trustee reimbursement guidelines where needed and bring focus to the trustee expectations regarding the expense reimbursement. The subcommittee consisted of Trustee Sharp, Trustee Drummond, and myself. After meeting twice in February to discuss the trustee expense reimbursement, we agreed upon the finalized set of written guidelines to serve as a guide for the college's administration in processing trustee expense reimbursement. Those guidelines have been circulated to the current trustees for information in their review. Written guidelines will be maintained in the president's office and provided to all new trustees during orientation.
Thank you, Trustee Lindstrom. So, this will be a set of guidelines we'll follow, and I appreciate the work you did, again, and we had no comments in the 30-day period from the reading last month to this month, so I appreciate all of your interest in that, and hopefully, it'll help us all make decisions as we go forward and what's what. Thank you.
Before you, you have the beautifully done publication of the college. That is for the League for Innovation. That's the first step in the reapplication process. Hats off to Julie Haas and her department that produced that book. That will now be sent into the league, and they will look at that. Hopefully, it will reflect, and I think it does, a highly innovative campus. Assuming that this goes through, and believe me, they don't always do, because they can send them back for modification, the next step will be an onsite visit by members of the league. Dr. Corb is our league representative, and we're looking forward to pursuing this, to renew our membership with the League for Innovation. Yes, Trustee Musil, I see you're going to say something.
I'm just worried we'll get unaccredited for fraud because in this picture, Mr. Lindstrom has no facial hair. He looks completely different.
Are there any other comments?
Thank you for that insight. We're going to begin our lightning round with Dr. Corb and Dr. Larson. But before we get started, Officer Keaton, you did such a fine job to open the evening. Would you want to have some lightning round roll?
No, thank you, sir.
Okay, that's all right. Dr. Corb?
I just want to highlight the work that our grants department is doing. In working with faculty and staff, they have so far this year submitted 37 grants, and that represents 70 percent new grants, only 30 percent of those are reoccurring grants. And we're only three-quarters of the way through the year. Last year, we only submitted only, but they submitted 38 total for the whole year. So, they've already done 37. They have 14 that are in process. And so, speaking of innovation, there are a lot of people that are thinking about some projects and initiatives that we might be able to do through grant funding. And the dollar amount, currently this year, they've submitted $3 million more than we in, you know, proposals, more than what we even submitted last year. So, they've really been busy working on those things. Just some of the areas that they're looking at, international partnerships that have to do with students doing things abroad, arts education, sustainability, nutrition, workforce development, humanities, assisting veterans on campus, and assisting underprepared students. So, wide variety of things that are being submitted. So, hopefully, you'll see some of those things come through as grants that we received.
It's terrific. Thank you. Dr. Larson?
Thank you, Dr. Sopchik. As you know, I'm finishing up my third week here at Johnson County Community College, and I've appreciated the warm welcome. I just want to offer a few impressions. I've been thoroughly impressed by the caliber of the faculty, staff, students, and trustees that I've met. And I've met all of them.
You beat me to it.
That changed tonight, Dr. Larson?
Not at all, not at all.
Usually, the cabinet goes in the other direction. It's Dr. Trustees first, and then we work down. Thank you.
But so impressed by folks' dedication to and pride in this institution. I've also toured almost every facility and am equally impressed by them and by the beauty of this campus. I so look forward to working with the board and with this management team to contribute to JCCC's future success. So, thank you so much.
And thank you, Barbara. Okay, now, we're going to go to the president's report, this segment of it, and I'm going to take you through a chronology of some of the things that have happened since our last meeting. Starting on February 19th and 20th, our Model UN team received an outstanding delegation award, the Delegates Choice Award, and three honorable mention awards for its portrayal of Canada and New Zealand at the 2014 Midwest Model United Nations Conference at Union Station in St. Louis. I'm going to read to you the names of the students who were a part of that. Erin Swift from Olathe, Bennett Hoffer from Olathe, Ian Snead from Leewood, Jeff Redman from Olathe, Marie Kristin Horvath, who's actually from Lingen, Germany, but is living in Lenexa, Natalie Sa Fuentez from Bogota. Brian Wright likes to stack this a little bit with international students. She's living in Miriam. Myra Furman from Kansas City, Kansas. Caitlin Silva from Gardner. Galen McGee from Shawnee. And, of course, lastly, we'd like to recognize Brian Wright, the faculty advisor of this who lives in Overland Park. Our Model UN team consistently represents us impeccably in these competitions and do a great job. On February 21st, we had Horticulture Science Day here on campus. Our horticulture program hosted urban horticulture and pest management. It was the fourth annual Horticulture Science Day. It was an opportunity for students and local businesses and experts in the field to share insights about this topic. 400-plus people attended. More than 200 of those were students. So, in addition to our students, we had students from Olathe North and Olathe Northwest High Schools. I provided a few welcoming remarks. It was followed by Dalton Hermes from Hermes Landscaping, which is one of the largest landscapers in the Midwest. The plenary session was provided by Dr. Katherine Daniels from Washington State University. We had other speakers here from Tennessee, from Washington, D.C., Ontario, Canada, Kansas State, and many local businesses. Even Ed Holland from Treat America had a spot on the agenda. Overall, we had 17 booths, and 14 of those were from local businesses in K-State, the USDA, and the Missouri Department of Agriculture. The sponsors were Hermes Landscaping, Ryan Lawn &amp; Tree, Suburban Lawn &amp; Garden, Family Tree Nursery, Loma Vista Nursery. And ultimately, our hats are off to Lakeshrihar, who pulled this one off. It was an outstanding opportunity for the college. On February 22nd, which was a Saturday, we had hundreds of children running around here in the middle school age on a scavenger hunt. And it was incredible to watch them with their parents and their list of things to find on campus as they raced around. It was also fun to watch our security force, who did an outstanding job keeping tabs of that event. It's a great way to get people on campus. On February 28th, we had the Timeless Fashion Show. They, it was sort of two-capacity crowds in the Polski. It was incredible. The designs were wonderful. It was beautifully presented, and the Carlson Center staff did a fantastic job designing the set and executing the lights and sounds. It was actually better than any runway show you'd see on cable. I want to recognize our student designers, Kyle Brown, Melissa Lynette, Holly Hermes, Christopher Rafiel, Maria Mata, Mary Wasigata, Liz Roning, Sharon Russell, Veronica Schrader, Tiara Thomas-Moeman, Jane Marie Thompson, Joe Walker, and Shanda Wright. Especially, I'd like to recognize our faculty, Joy Rhodes, and Department Chair Joan McCrulice Laafferty for their leadership. It was an outstanding evening. On March 5th, I got a letter, and sometimes I get all kinds of different letters and emails, but this one was one that I'll share with you. It was from the owner of Audrey Spirit LLC, a business that helps hospitalized teens and children using hospital-friendly clothing. And it was commending our KSBDC counselor, Elisa Waldman. They were commending Elisa for her tireless support, her expertise, and her business-like approach as she counseled this startup business. They were ecstatic because they had just executed their first commercial sale to Children's Mercy Hospital. So, our hats off to our SBDC and Elisa for providing this kind of support to a starting business in the community. March 7th, a Nerman opening featuring Ebony Patterson, and the exhibition is called Dynasty. Ebony Patterson is a Jamaican-born and tenured faculty member at the University of Kentucky. This is one of her first exhibitions. If you haven't had a chance to drop by the Nerman and check this out, it was pretty incredible. She's going to be a contemporary art superstar. But to go there and look at her art on the night of the opening, and then to hear her lecture, and then to go back and look at the art is an incredible experience that over 200 people enjoyed that night. Hats off to Bruce Hartman for pulling this one off again. On March 7th to 9th, our PTK, our Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society served us well in the Kansas Regional Convention that was held in Lawrence. We brought home nine awards. The student officers are Joe Biso, Marcella Carvalho, Fabian Grebmeskek, Ramona Nelson, Amy Reinhardt, Ernesto Romo Alba, Fabiola Sanchez. They all received recognition for their work as the officer team. Other students recognized were Megan Gladbach, Michael Young, and I'd like to recognize the advisors, Pat Decker, Terry Helmick, and Asia Foster Nelson for their great work. Our PTK group makes us proud consistently throughout the years. And then on March 8th, we had the Virginia Krebs Memorial Service. Stephanie's been recognized for her terrific address. It was incredibly well-delivered. I'd also like to recognize all those who were involved on staff at the college to make that a befitting tribute to Virginia Krebs, who served this college so well. Those are just the highlights that I was involved with. There are so many more things that go on this campus on a daily basis. You know, and we recognize a lot of student achievement in extracurricular activities, but we have to remember that we have many more students experiencing great personal achievement every day in the classroom. Now, upcoming events, March 17th, the NJCAA Division II Girls National Tournament is going to be here. You know, our team, over the past seasons, we've appeared in 67 poles, our girls' basketball team, 67 poles, and 61 of those times, we ranked in the top five. Unfortunately, we're not in this year's tournament. We lost to Highland, but we really had a very good season. We'd like to congratulate Coach Conrad for his remarkable effort in having this team do so well on the court. They represent us very well every season. Of course, that 16-team tournament will begin on Tuesday, March 18th, and I believe, Trustee Cook, you'll be addressing the group at Monday night on the 17th. I think that's in the DoubleTree at their banquet. On March 20th, in the Polski, we're going to have a KCI Airport Discussion that we're hosting. It's on March 20th. David Fowler, longtime supporter of the college from KPMG, is chairing these discussions. Please let it be known that JCCC does not have any position on the airport, unless they want to build it here.
We're against that.
What?
We're for it against it if they build it right here.
We could build it, well, we'll see how that goes. On March 20th, we have Public Television's Antique Roadshow is going, they're going to host the screening here in Yardley Hall. That sold out in four days.
What day is that?
Dave, they don't have any tickets left. I'm sorry. No, that's going to be on March 20th. On March 20th, right, Emily? That's right.
Do you have a couple of tickets?
Emily's done a great job. Emily's done a great job working with KCPT, and we're thrilled that they've come over here to host that. On March 27th, we're going to have a NASA engineer who led the rover landing on Mars. On March 28th, if you get a chance, you should attend the International Student Dinner and also subsequent entertainment. I did so last year. It's really outstanding. It's a lot of fun. On March 30th, the Arts Council of Johnson County is going to host a Shooting Stars here on our campus. And, of course, Trustee Musil's already mentioned the co-in series with Tracy Lawrence's performance. No, that's okay.
I want to make sure it got mentioned.
So, that's a report, but it's clear that this campus continues to be a hotbed for student achievement, as well as a place where organizations from throughout our community can convene and talk about the important issues of the day.
Thank you, Dr. Sopchik. Any questions? Trustee Sharp?
I didn't have a question. I just have a comment. I have to say that the president's report is my favorite part of every board bracket. That's the stuff where we really get the meat of, what our students are doing, what our faculty. Every single time, there's some faculty that's had this national, international award, doing these really forward-thinking, progressive, productive, proactive projects and research works. And I just want to, that's my favorite part every time. So, I know it's a lot of work for everyone to contribute to that, and I just want to thank them for that.
Based on those remarks, it's clear the content is your favorite part and not the delivery. So, thank you.
No comment.
Probably both.
I do not, I guess I shouldn't assume. Any old business? Seeing none. Any new business? Hearing none. Reports from Board Liaisons, the first one is the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. We have not met since our last meeting. We are polling the colleges regarding the Kansas Leadership Institute that we have addressed, whereby we're putting together a plan to help support vice presidents, deans, anybody on a college campus that's interested in, at someday, becoming a president of a college, and then also the trustee development. Those results should be in the next week. I would hope from all the colleges, we're hearing very good support by that, and that'll be an ongoing activity with KECT. The next KECT meeting is June 13th and 14th out west. If any of you, I believe, are going to Garden City, and if any of you would like to join us in that trip, we are certainly welcome to do so. I would say that I had the opportunity to attend a reception yesterday evening with, hosted by the Kansas Board of Regents in Topeka. Dr. Sopchik was in attendance as well. And all the community colleges and the Executive Committee of KECT were present. Very good dialogue. My sense is that the Board of Regents are very supportive of the community colleges' network in Kansas and very supportive of the work we do as trustees and the great work faculty does with students in the teaching and learning process. So, very, very nice event. With that, entertain any questions. Trustee Lindstrom?
If you don't have a question, have a request. Can we get additional copies of this?
Absolutely. Of the, sure. I thought you were going to ask me a question, so I was wondering what your question was going to be. Johnson County Research Triangle, Trustee Musil?
We've not met, as I mentioned last month. We won't meet till in May. I apologize. I think I told you the right date last month, and I think it's April 22nd. There will be a community breakfast to report on the five years of the Johnson County Educational Research Triangle efforts, the funds that have been raised from the 8-cent tax. I believe we're all going to be invited, so if you can hold the morning of April 22nd, I hope I'm right, and that you're all going to be invited.
April 22nd?
Yes, that's my recollection. I didn't check it here.
Thank you. Foundation report, Trustee Sharp?
I was adding that to my calendar. Foundation report, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The annual block party will be Thursday, March 27th, from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. The event recognizes faculty who have contributed at least $25 to the foundation during that calendar year. The foundation would like to invite the trustees to join as well, but you have to bring $25. Kidding.
Today, yeah. 27.
The eighth annual international dinner, which President Sopchik already mentioned, will take place on Friday, March 28th. The event benefits scholarships for international and immigrant students, and the theme this year is Taste of India. So, I highly encourage you to go. And then finally, the recommendation for the 2014-2015 Foundation Board slate will be presented at the directors' meeting on March 25th, 2014. So, we have members who are terming out of the Foundation Board as directors and members, and then new folks who are coming in. Can I talk about Johnson Countyan of the Year?
Sure, absolutely.
Is that, okay.
Absolutely.
It's not on the agenda, so I wanted to make sure. The foundation announced on Friday, excuse me, that Gary Marsh of Heart to Heart International will be the 2014 Johnson Countyan of the Year, and will be recognized at the Summit Chan at Evening event, the second weekend in November. And he is a wonderful human being, and obviously, a physician, but started his service to the international medical community 25, 30, some odd years ago. And I just wanted to congratulate him and encourage you all to save the date for that event. And if any other trustees have comments about Gary, I'd invite those.
Yes, Dr. Marsh, many people know him in the community for his work with Heart to Heart.[1776.52] It's, this, he's an incredible person to recognize at this event, we're thrilled with the fact that he's, he's accepted our invitation. He's also the first person from Olathe ever to be recognized as a Johnson County of the Year. So hats off to the selection committee and for the foundation for making this pick. It's, it's going to be an outstanding evening, and we look forward to working with Dr. Marsh and getting to know him better, so.
Trustee Musil.
Well, I, I probably met Dr. Marsh, Gary, in the most, in the oddest way. I, I met him running for Congress in 2000 in the Republican primary when Gary was a candidate opposing me. It was a joy to run against somebody with passion, compassion, patriotism. He spent most of the primary campaign deployed in his Army Reserve Unit. He participated in debates by telephone. He is a man of principle and brilliant thinking, great policy thoughts, which frankly cost him politically, but he didn't care because it was what he is at the core, and his medical missions have done more good for more people in the world than probably anybody, I shouldn't say, at least as many as anybody else in Johnson County, and I am very pleased that we're gonna honor him this fall. Gary Marsh is a fine human being.
Thank you. Trustee Sharp, anything else in your report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Faculty Association, we're honored to have Dr. Andrea Brumfield this evening, stepping in for Dr. Williams. Thank you.
Dr. Williams is not here tonight because she and Professor Dennis Arjo from Philosophy are representing JCCC on a panel at the Asian Studies Development Program Conference in Houston. This program is part of the East-West Center and University of Y, and JCCC is a regional site for Asian studies, and she sends her regards. Faculty and students are very busy right now with midterm exams, major projects, and probably a lot of professors will be catching up on grading, I will, and a lot of students will be preparing for exams and doing their research over this break. Nine departments are right now engaged in program review, collecting data, and writing up the reports. The new faculty evaluation process has likewise been rolled out and is going successfully. The FA has completed the disciplinary determinations, in other words, determining what discipline areas define our various programs and divisions, and the Faculty Association Negotiation Team is now working with College Council to draft mutually agreeable language for the Master Agreement Amendment to Section 8. We've had an exciting week on campus because scholar and resident Dr. Bibi Barami has been guest-teaching many classes and has offered the community two lectures. Dr. Barami is an anthropologist who completed her PhD at the University of Pennsylvania. She has written extensively about the culture of Spain and France. Her lecture last night focused on several pilgrims she's, she has taken to the St. James Cathedral in Santiago de Compostela in northwest Spain, and today she gave a lecture that came from her most recent book manuscript, Café Oudre, A Travel Memoir of Southwestern France. Last night's lecture at the Hudson Auditorium was almost a standing-room-only event. She's met many students and professors, and I think it is fair to say that her visit has enriched many people's cultural understanding of those regions. Looking ahead, the newly revamped Cavalier Film Festival, now called Take Five Cavalier Film Festival, is coming up on April the 4th, and will involve screenings of the participants' films, as well as workshops on everything from makeup to scripting to storyboarding. Many of our students, both here and at local high schools, are eagerly anticipating this event, including my own son. Again, looking back, many people in our community attended the Celebration of Life Memorial Service for Virginia Krebs, and again, we would, we had a chance to remember and appreciate Virginia's service and how important her vision was to establishing our college and to championing the values and importance of a strong public school system in our county. And with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Dr. Brumfield. Any questions of Dr. Brumfield? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I had the opportunity this afternoon, the privilege actually, to attend this Faculty Senate Meeting at the invite of Dr. Vin Clark, I appreciated that, Dr. Clark. I was impressed with the sincerity of the dialogue and the interest. I, I had to leave at halftime about to come over here, but I, I, again, thank you very much for that opportunity. Consent Agenda is a time we deal with a number of items of routine matter. We take them as a large group. Is there any item that a trustee would like to pull off the consent agenda for further discussion? Any item that a trustee would like to remove? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have an executive session this evening. I would like to entertain a-
If we're gonna, sort of bragging on a lot of activities here, I attended last night's performance of the Chamber Choir and the Mad Regalia Choir in the Polski Theater. It was fun, uptempo, upbeat, great students and a good crowd, and Terry Teal, the professor of music, led that, and it was another good performance, and it just reminds me that I need to be on campus more, seeing some of these events, particularly those that involve culture.
Thank you, Trustee Musil. All in favor signify by saying aye. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-select, non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to protect the privilege, and the Board's communications with its attorney on legal matters. This session will last up to 30 minutes. No action will be taken during this session. We would like to invite Tanya Wilson, Mary Nero, Dr. Corb, and Dr. Larson to join in this executive session. We will begin that executive session in six minutes, and begin that session according to the clock on the back of the wall at 5:40 and last up to 30 minutes.
So moved.
Second. Did I say six?
You said 5:40, and we'll start at 6:40.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 6:40, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, we are back in open session. Previously, I omitted Dr. Sapchik to the list, so I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to protect the privilege and the Board's communications with its, with its attorney on legal matters. This session will last up to 30 minutes, and no action will be taken during this session. We would like to invite Dr. Sapchik, Tanya Wilson, Mary Nero, Dr. Corb, and Dr. Larson to join this executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We will start this executive session at 6:41 and last up to 30 minutes. Thank you. We are out of executive session, the executive session ended at 6:55, no action was taken. We are now back in open section, session, and I would entertain a motion to, for adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you.